Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order and have the clerk lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you everyone for coming out on this great spring evening. If I could have a motion a second that the agenda be approved, our agenda of April 11th be approved as submitted.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. We have a consent agenda that has the approval of our minutes, recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, the Committee on Preschool Special Education, recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes, and a request to approve recommended bidders in regards to a BOSI's cooperative project, and also an additional recommended bidder schedule as well for supplies that is bid through BOSI's. If I could have a motion a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? All those in favor? Thank you. We have attached in the board members packets 3D the treasurer's report for the month ending February 28th, 2017. If I could have a motion a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending February 28th, 2017, be approved.
Second.
Any questions on the treasurer's report? We have our treasurer in the audience. Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. We have no special reports, correct?
Correct.
So this is our visitor speaking time, in which time is provided within the agenda for our residents to bring concerns and comments to the board. Comments should not be related to any particular individual or to the specifics of negotiations, since it's not proper for the board to discuss these in public session. A request to speak comment from four must be filled out prior to the start of the citizens' comment period and given to our district clerk. It's expected that speakers will limit their comments to five minutes or less, and the board reserves the right to limit the total amount of time spent on the comment period based on the length of our agenda. Written communication to the Board of Education is also encouraged. And we have some speakers tonight. Okay. First, we have Kathy Cummins, I'm sorry, and Lori Cockman from the Penfield Ecumenical Food Shelf to give us a thank you, I guess. Come on forward.
Thank you. I'm Kathy Cummins, one of the founders and the current president of the board at the Penfield Ecumenical Food Shelf.
And I'm Lori Cockman, volunteer coordinator at the Penfield Ecumenical Food Shelf.
The Penfield Food Shelf is celebrating its 20th anniversary this year. While this is a bittersweet milestone, we do want to take the time to thank the Penfield Central School District for their generous support over the years. We opened our doors in 1997, not really thinking that we would be growing stronger and busier each year. We wanted to provide a place for Penfield residents to access healthy food in a dignified and respectful manner. We continue to do the same today. We currently serve approximately 85 families, weekly with fresh fruits, veggies, breads, and other food, and we served 237 different Penfield families just last year.
Volunteers have been the backbone of our work for over 20 years. Our current team of close to 90 volunteers, who average 146 hours a week, help us pick up rescued food, sort produce, pull orders for delivery, help with administrative duties, and much more. Without this wonderful group of supporters, it would be difficult to provide food to our hungry neighbors each week. We would like to say thank you to all the volunteers who have supported the Food Shelf since 1997. These supporters elect to graciously spend so much of their time helping us feed Penfield's hungry.
The Penfield Central School District has supported us during this journey through Make a Difference Day, at 100th day of school events, at the holidays by collecting specific items to add to our holiday dinners with fundraisers, with the Bay Trail Grocery Cart Challenge, and adopting a shelf, from kindergarten classrooms to the robotics team, from the sports teams to the teachers' association, we have received continued support. We've watched young students support us in their elementary school years, then at Bay Trail, and then through their high school years. We even have PHS alumni who come back and support us through fundraising and through volunteering. An entire generation of young people have learned about helping others right here in our community. The generosity of these groups is remarkable, and we would not be able to serve Penfield's neediest without the support of Penfield's students, alumni, and staff.
We'd like to share a few words from our clients with you. One wrote, "I have never been so thankful for anything in our lives. You make the difference between our being able to eat healthy and eating junk, since we both have cancer. You make a life-saving difference."
Another guest recently wrote, "We live week to week, sometimes day to day. With the Penfield Food Shelf, I know my children will have plenty of food, and healthy food too, to last us. Sometimes what we get from the Food Shelf is all we have."
Summer vacation for schoolchildren can put a further strain on some family food budgets with children home for breakfast and lunch each day. According to Feeding America, only 18 percent of those in the school lunch program are fed through the federal summer food program. Our newest initiative, starting this summer, is to provide additional breakfast and lunch foods over the summer to families with school-aged children. We are able to pilot a program like this because of the generosity of the Penfield community. If you would like additional information about the Penfield Ecumenical Food Shelf and how you can help, I invite you to visit our website, penfieldecumenicalfoodshelf.org, and find us on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter.
And once again, we thank you for the wonderful support that the school district has given us. Any questions or anything?
Yes, Barb?
Uh-oh, Barb.
No, no, it's not a question. It's an accolade, because I was there when you first started everything, and 20 years, you're absolutely right. I mean, back then, when you came to Cobles and you started it, and you were excited and enthusiastic, and it just took off from there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, and all the wonderful volunteers you have, because it is a gift.
And there's quite a few of them here tonight, so...
Yes, yes. So I can say that I was there at the beginning. I know that a lot of people think on this board that I founded Penfield, but I didn't. But that was one I was very excited for.
Oh, thank you. Great.
Anybody else? Well, thank you for, you know, helping us. And as a board and a district, you know, part of our mission is collaboration with the community. And I think this is just a great example of that collaboration on every level of our district. So we appreciate your support and the ability to collaborate with you, and certainly look forward to doing that for many more years. Would the rest of you like to introduce yourselves that are out in the crowd? Or if you wanted to introduce them?
They'd love to.
Paula Arvam.
Karen Eric.
Bart Spardudo.
Jai Bernhard.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We also have another request, and it's from Lydia Palmer, Westfall Drive, Old Westfall Drive, and she's going to comment on the Penfield High School PTSA status for next year. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. As the board chair stated, I'm Lydia Palmer. I am the current president of the High School PTSA. I have taken up Mr. Elidge on an invitation that we received when he attended our meeting last week to come and speak to you and give you an update on where the High School PTSA stands going into the end of this year and next year. I am the president, having followed two previous presidents over the last three years. So we had one person who filled the role two years, another president last year, and then I stepped into the role this year. We have focused this year on streamlining our activities so that we are delivering what is seen as high-value programming to our parents, to our students, and to the faculty and staff. We have really tried to hone in our activities on delivering this very focused programming based on really essentially a lack of volunteer membership and people to actually execute pretty extensive activities and programming. As of this evening, and we are winding down for the year, we have not identified, nor has anyone self-identified, as either a president or a treasurer for next year's PTSA in the high school. We have a leadership structure that, based on bylaws, we are supposed to fill, but at a very minimum, we have to have a president and a treasurer for the organization to operate. Essentially, we need two people to sign checks. And without that funding capability, essentially, the organization really can't function. We have fortunately had a number of people who have expressed interest in continuing some of the committee positions, things such as overseeing scholarship awards for students at the end of the year, grants for faculty requests, and for student team requests. And that's wonderful, and we're thrilled that people are very interested in that. And the organization has been working to transition new people into those positions. But without a president and a treasurer next year, the organization will essentially go dormant. And by dormant, I mean that it is not our intention to disband the organization, but rather to leave the administration of the high school with documentation and guidelines under which, if someone does self-identify next year, to lead the organization, they will be able to pick that information up and do the basic operations needed, have samples of plans and so on that were done for this year, so that they will have a good sense of how they could move forward. We are looking for people to identify for those two leadership roles by the end of May. We've given it some wiggle room. We first said, gee, we'd really like someone to identify by sometime around April. We moved it to the beginning of May. We still have not, to this point, heard anything. We're prepared to take it out until the end of May. We have outreach to the high school parents through our traditional channels, so the High Schools Observer, the PTSA e-news that goes out to all of our parents for whom we have a good email address. And I know that a number of people in the organization have been carrying that information out. We have also reached out to the Bay Trail PTSA and their parent communication channels. We're fortunate to have a couple of people identify interest in, again, taking some committee leadership roles, but I don't think it's difficult to understand that they're a little hesitant to come out of the middle school environment when their children are first going into high school and step into a president or a leadership role for the organization. I am cautious to say that we do want the organization to, first of all, we clearly want the organization to continue. We have had very positive feedback on the programming that we have delivered this year and have actually gotten some increased interest from parents for attending some of the activities that we have offered to them. We certainly want, in the worst-case scenario, for it to be dormant as opposed to disbanding. If the organization is disbanded according to the PTSA bylaws, all of the assets of the organization belong to the state PTSA. So they will essentially take any funding in any of our bank accounts and roll it up into the state. And if anyone should decide that they want to start the organization again at some point in the future, they will be starting with a zero balance to work with. So that is where we stand. We certainly encourage anyone who would be interested in a leadership role to contact the PTSA. And we are welcome to consider any ideas that anyone has for reaching out to some of the parents in the organization, or in the, I'm sorry, in the district. To be honest, I'm not going anywhere. So if someone really does need help and assistance in executing next year, there will be some guidance there. But my son is graduating, so I won't be a regular member of the Penfield High School community. And my treasurer, bless his heart, has been doing this for seven years. He would like to move on to other things. So those two positions are the ones that we really, truly do need to replace.
Well, thank you. It's sad in a sense, and given the fact that volunteerism is tough all over. But it seems to me, what I remember is, sometimes the committees were harder to run than the meetings as president and treasurer. So any board members have questions? Mark?
I just want to thank you for coming out, because I happened to be at that meeting. I think it was just, you know, luck that I happened to be at this meeting at the time when you were talking about this. And I was kind of surprised, because we visit all the PTSAs and meetings, and it is an essential partnership between the families and the school. And it's something that everyone really reveres, so I was surprised to hear this. I'm glad you came out to share this with all of us. And one thing that you mentioned at the meeting, and you might want to mention here, is all the things that the PTSA does over the course of the year for the high school. Because the people don't recognize all these things may not come from your organization.
Sure. The High School PTSA, unlike the PTSAs at the lower levels where the parents are really much more heavily involved in school activities and in their children's involvement in the school, the high school, as I said, we've honed in what we're trying to do in order to deliver some key, high-value activities and programs. So for parents, we deliver a weekly e-news in conjunction with Nancy Bradstreet and the Infinite Campus system. We're able to email the high school parents with announcements that they don't normally otherwise see. So they will have information about what's going on from a PTSA perspective, what the upcoming presentations are, et cetera. We have a number of organizations that do contact us with their information to share out with the broader parent body. And we do provide a lot of information about calendaring and so on and upcoming events. So the e-news is one thing that we do provide for parents. We also, rather than offering a monthly meeting, which I know people just really love to come and sit in a meeting, we've changed our meeting format so that we can deliver a presentation of a topic of interest to parents. They're not held monthly. We hold about six meetings a year. This year, we have delivered presentations from highly qualified experts on things like executive functioning skills for teens and how you can help your child to become better organized, a better communicator, develop certain skills that you might find that they don't have or even identify that your child may not have these skills. We have delivered PTSA prep information, both for the students and the parents, so that they understand, I'm sorry, PSAT, I got my acronym messed up, PSAT and SAT prep, so that the parents know how they can best help their child be prepared for those important tests. We delivered a piece in January on teen financial literacy that was extremely well-received, actually best received by the students who attended. They found it very interesting to hear from a financial planning professional on how, as teenagers, they can start to develop good financial habits. We will be, last week, when Mark joined us, we had Paul Burke be the high school librarian go through a list of really good recommendations for summer reading and talk a little bit about how the summer reading lists are developed, more specifically, how parents can really get their children reading over summer and why that is important. And our last presentation is the first week of May. It is a college preparatory presentation. We bring in representatives from a number of the area colleges who are actually the parent offices or the student affairs offices to talk about how students who are getting ready for those college years can be ready for the transition, the social transition, the living transition, in many cases, being away from their home for an extended period for the first time. And as I mentioned, for the faculty and for the student teams and staff-led organizations, we provide a fall and a summer grant program. So people make a request for funding for items or program support that they need, and the PTSA provides grants of anywhere from $100 to $500 for those organizations to make purchases that they need. We do operate a scholarship program. We made a change to the scholarship program this year so that rather than awarding any number of hundred or $150 scholarships, we decided to award four scholarships, one at $1,500, one at $1,000, and two at $500 in order to make those scholarships really more valuable to the students who are getting them. We operate our website to keep people a little bit more informed. So, oh, and I'm sorry, there is one more thing that we have coming up that's very important, which is that we do a faculty and staff appreciation breakfast in May in conjunction with Teacher Appreciation Week. We extend it, of course, to everyone, because we are so appreciative of what the faculty and the staff in the high school do for us in educating our students. So, and to Mark's point, yes, none of those things will go forward because the bylaws of the PTSA state that anyone who is doing any of those activities, performing any of those activities, must be a member of that PTSA organization. And if there is no PTSA organization, you cannot really be a member of the organization. It simply won't be operating. So those things will all go away.
Thank you. I hope you find the volunteers that you need.
Thank you.
Well, thank you again for your incredible devotion and service, and certainly to your treasurer for the last seven years.
Yes, Bob Wells has done a tremendous job as treasurer.
I met Bob, and, you know, he really knows what he's doing. But I think, you know, Dr. Putnam can perhaps reach out to Dr. Maloney and Mr. Buddington to kind of identify, if we can, parents.
We've been trying.
You know, one thing I think of having twins as freshmen in college, I mean, they're relentless in chasing you as parents. And I imagine it fades, you know, as the years go by. So I think that eighth-grade freshman class is where you can get the volunteers. So thank you again for coming and speaking to us, and we appreciate all you've done.
Certainly. Thank you.
Okay. Our student representative, Claire, welcome.
Hi, thank you. So at Harris Hill, kindergarten students welcomed spring and the end of hibernation with a teddy bear parade, where students made floats advertising their teddy bears and paraded them down the hallways. At Cobles, the flower city of Valdeville performed funny skits for kindergarten first and second graders. And at Indian Landing, second-grade students learned how to cite their sources and showed their vast knowledge in astronomy through exhibits in the Solar System Museum. Also, students showed off their talent in the Indian Landing Parent-Tutor Organization Talent Show. At Scribner, kindergarten and fifth-grade students paired up to make paperback towns in order to learn about the economy and how towns function. And Scribner also introduced the Girls on the Run program after school that encourages positive emotional, social, mental, and physical development through physical activity and problem solving. At Bay Trail, students displayed their science interest projects in the hallways, and Bay Trail had their annual Career Exploration Week last week, which allowed students to experience different careers and ask professionals more information about what their job entails. At Penfield High School, students in the Key Club visited the Rochester International Academy School in which Penfield high schoolers spent the day with RIA students, reading books and sitting in on classes. Also, this Penfield senior volleyball team members returned to Scribner to help coach students during intermural volleyball. And the unified basketball season has started at the high school and elementary schools. The Penfield High School also hosted a Suzuki concert where students from the elementary and middle school performed Suzuki string pieces with the help of a few high school volunteers. And lastly, the junior prom was held this pack weekend at Locust Hill Country Club.
Wow, that's a great, great address for that prom, too. Barb?
I was fortunate enough to be the board member to introduce the 51st Annual Suzuki Concert. It doesn't matter how many times, I just get blown away. It's just really an amazing, amazing feat, because the place was packed. I couldn't even sit down after I introduced. I had to stand, which was okay. But just beautiful, just beautiful, so...
I think that Thus the Recognition is one of the best music programs in America, which we recently received word of, so certainly that fits right into that. So any other questions for Claire? So next week, what are you up to? Studying all week?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right. Good answer. All right. Thanks for joining us. Okay, Dr. Putnam, Superintendent's report.
I'll just mention two things. First is, the Indian Landing Talent Show is not in mind, so thank you for mentioning that. And I brought my kids, who are Cobles students, there. And the Indian Landing PTO gave us reserved seats and tickets at Will Call, so both my children now want to transfer to Indian Landing, because they feel like they're famous, because they sat in the front. But I apologize, I don't remember the student's name, but there were four students who did a rendition of a song from Hamilton, which was spot-on. And I videotaped it. I sent it to a couple of board members and some other people, so I'll share it with the board, but it was incredible. But because it's elementary school, they came in third place. I don't know if all the elementary students knew just how talented it was to sing Hamilton. So it was great. And the Suzuki Concert, again, I know Jim was there and Mark was there. Our children were up on stage, too. It's one of those great things of having people live in the community and work for the district, and it was really, really powerful. So it's great. Thank you. Today, we have my student and staff honors, and then the 2017-18 budget review, as well as, it's not on there, but the seeker process will do as well. And surprise to the board, what I'm going to ask is that we move the budget review presentation after the seeker review, because we have some people in the audience, and then as much as they want to stay through the whole meeting, they don't necessarily have to stay through the whole meeting. So just a couple of updates. Indian Landing PTO and Harris Hill PTA Playground donations. As you know, we're looking to build playgrounds. We've talked here at the board meetings that the elementary schools were given the ability, because they asked, and we want to partner with them, to provide additional funds above and beyond what the district is purchasing. And Indian Landing donated $10,386, and Harris Hill has donated $25,000. Hill has donated twenty-five thousand five hundred and forty-eight, is not a competition, there's no winner here, but both schools will be, because of their donations and their fundraising, they'll be able to add a couple of different à la carte pieces of playground equipment to their playground, so, so very exciting. Robotics Award, this is our robotics team, and most recently came back once again with the chairman award, one of the most prestigious awards in robotics, really not just for a win, but it's about how they interact with other students and how they help other teams, and I just think it always fits for the district's goal on focusing and supporting the whole student, because it's not necessarily about the win, but it's how you help other people do well and achieve. As John mentioned, Penfield Center School District was named among the Best Communities for Music Education, and Penfield is one of only four percent of districts across the nation to receive this prestigious award this year. The Best Communities for Music Education is a designation to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement and efforts to provide music access and education to all students. And just, again, as a superintendent, but also as a father of a couple Suzuki kids, it's, it really is incredible. Movie fundraiser, the PHS Student Council held a movie night, where they raised just over a hundred and fifty dollars for the Verona Street Animal Shelter, and just for fun, that dog right there is not just a regular dog, but that is Toto from the Penfield musical Wizard of Oz, also known as Mr. Gabby's Dog. So, if you saw, if you saw the musical, he, that dog did a great job, and I was surprised that that dog's only two years old, because he looks like he's forty-seven, so, very impressed.
That is a face.
But a great, fun night for high school kids to come out. They voted on a film, they had three films, they voted on which film to watch that evening, and then, the, the film was free, refreshments were what you, were charged for, and then they raised some money for, for a great cause. Student Summit on Race, this was our fourth annual Student Summit on Race. Those are the students we took from Penfield, Dr. Maloney and Jordan Gambino, a English teacher is there. I stopped over there, March 31st, was held at the Wegmans Facility Complex Center in, in Gates, and Wegmans was absolutely incredible, and provided all the food, refreshments, and, and meeting spaces, but we had, this has been growing, as you remember, West Iranique last school year started it, Penfield quickly jumped on. We hosted the second ever Rock to Change, or also known as the Student Summit on Race, where we bring high school students together. High school student planned, this is not adult plan, everything, all the planning is done by high school students with the support of faculty and administration, but the students plan it, and really to come together to have very difficult conversations about race in order to, to make change, and, and, and work towards equality. This was the fourth time it took place, it keeps growing. We had students from the Buffalo area travel, private schools as well in the area, and I just learned today at the Urban Suburban Meeting, so at this, we had over four hundred students showed up. Now, the first time it was held in West Iranique, they had about a hundred and fifty, so it just, it keeps growing, which is really, really incredible. The students from the Buffalo school districts and surrounding Buffalo school districts went back and just let us know this morning that they're going to be holding their own summits on race, they're going to refer to it as the Challenge to Change, and take the same concept in the Buffalo area. And so it's exciting to know that Penfield was right on, in the beginning of the planning stages. The other thing I can tell you is that this group started is Mosaic Club, just started, they had their first meeting last week in Brighton Central, there's a very strong Mosaic Club. The purpose is really about equality and bringing students together to plan activities and events, in order to open up dialogue about the concept of race. And so Penfield has joined, in the sense that we have our own Mosaic Club at the high school, run by Jordan Gambino as the teacher advisor, and Dr. Maloney as well, who's been very involved. The Fire Essay Awards, Monroe County Volunteer Firemen's Association Fire Prevention Essay Contest, a lot of great winners here. Our fifth grade Lawson Drebic, first place winner. Scribner, fifth grade Lily Husband, was a second place winner, and both in Western New York and Monroe County, for grades five to six category. A wonderful showing for our students. And then also placing at the Monroe County level, were Jordan Dawson from Harris Hill, says sixth place, and then Sophia Temming, Indian Landing, tenth place, and congratulations also goes out to Bay Trail sixth grader Emily Vessa for winning an outstanding essay award. So, just again, a great partnership with the Monroe County Volunteer Firemen's Association, and really glad our students put themselves out there with their talent. Last night, just in, in my closing of my report, just last night, I wanted to thank everybody that was able to come out for our panel on mental health and suicide prevention. This was the fourth in a series of conversations and education and community dialogues that we've started here in Penfield. As the board's aware, I just thank you to the board for your support, for the district to really be a leader in having very difficult conversations brought to light in the public. And so we started this year with conversations around drug use, we've talked about racism, we've talked about screen time, and the decisions that parents need to make at home, and this was our fourth, fourth and, and last district presentation for the school year. We had over a hundred and seventy-five people in the audience last night. Thank you goes out to Dr. George Nazra from the University of Rochester, who was tremendously helpful in bringing experts from the field of suicide prevention and mental health from the University of Rochester, as well as Brandon Fox, our own school counselor and coordinator for our trauma, illness, and grief team, and just some great questions, and also a thank you to, to Mr. Mark Wiktorski, who shared a video about his own struggle with suicide and, with his son. And I share that openly, because I talked to Mark today, and the entire video from last night will be online, including Mark Wiktorski's video that he filmed. He's very much open in sharing his story to put a face to something that we sometimes only talk about in, in back rooms in, in, in our house, and having conversations around mental health and suicide prevention is, is critical, to take those conversations out of, out, out of the living room and into public, so we can talk about it. And just one piece I'll mention is the, the doctor last night, who asked the audience to raise her hand, if anybody in the audience knows somebody who was helped through counseling, and I would say everybody raise their hand. So it's just that amazing way to look at it and say, this is something that we don't talk about openly, but we know can have a positive impact if we do. So thank you to everybody who was there and who put that together. Nancy Bradstreet, as well as Director of Communications, does so much, but it isn't on stage, so you don't get to see her, but she's in the audience now, and the amount of work she put in to make sure that happened, as well as Dr. Maloney, Brandon Fox, and Sherry Smith, and, and loads of other people.
So, if I could just
Yes.
Comment, I, we were all there as board members, and I had a, you know, the, the video was just incredible, and, you know, I have twins who were friends with the twins and shared sports teams with the Wiktorski twins, so it was, you know, very touching to see that, but please pass on our, our genuine thanks to Mark Wiktorski for doing that, because that was an incredible thing to do.
Yeah.
And I think it'll make a huge difference, and on to Dr. Nazra and the panel, and I think as board members, you know, it was just incredible. And I had three families from our neighborhood, whose kids are in, I guess kindergarten to third grade, and saw them today, because the bus gets off right in front of the house, and the mothers were there, and they just said it was really, really incredible to be a part of that. That was their first time ever going to anything like that, so, and as we heard last night, it has to start when they're young, so, so again, thank you to everybody on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
Mark, did you have a comment, too?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm glad to hear it's going to be online, because one of the things that went there, especially when we had that video, I was afraid it was going to be very emotional, that I was going to be an emotional wreck, but it wasn't that way. It was very informative, and it was, you know, really important to watch, so if you're afraid about watching something that's going to really get you down, or get you, you know, to be a wreck, this, this is not that kind of material. I think you can watch it, and you can feel like you've learned something, and you feel stronger coming out of it, but not be upset.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and I'll pass those words on. I did talk to Mark today and, and shared that, but I'll make sure I reach out to George, Dr. George Nazra as well, and, and thank him personally on behalf of the board. And we're going to hold off on the 2017-18 budget. Mark, can I ask you to flip forward and get to the, the seeker piece, and I will introduce Ed Primo from Harder Sea Crest and Emery, and Vic Thomaselli, who I think are going to join us at the microphone, to, I'll turn it over to, to you gentlemen, but thank you very much for, for coming out this evening. Not that you really had a choice, but I'd like to, thank you.
We're happy to be here.
Just, so if you look at the, just for the board, when you look at your packet, I think it's, if you could flip to page.
I'm going to do it separate, so it's like page five, but no, it's not page five, it says page five at the bottom.
It says page five at the bottom, yes, thank you.
No, it's not page five.
Yeah, it says page five in the bottom, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I, excuse me, I'd also say that you also all received flash drives with what is this pretty voluminous document on it, which consists of a, an environmental impact, information on the environmental impact of a proposed project, and the elementary additions project. And there's an important seeker step tonight, so what we thought we should do is, later in the agenda, you have a resolution you need to adopt declaring yourselves lead agency. We have Mr. Ed Primo here, who's going to walk you through what this process is all about, and we've asked Mr. Thomaselli of SEI Design, the district's architects, to come and talk a little bit about the project as it currently exists, because obviously, to make some determinations about, about potential environmental impacts, you need to have some idea of what you're going to build. So, you know, we're, as you know, as members of the Facilities Committee and this board, you've had, you know, multiple updates, and the community's heard, we've had information on our website. None of this is done or final in any way, this is a point in time, but we need to pause, take a deep breath tonight, I think, and make some decisions about how we're going to go forward. So Ed, with that, can I turn it over to you?
Yeah, sure, thank you. My name's Ed Primo, I'm a partner at Harder Sea Crest and Emery. What I do for probably too many years to admit, is I counsel municipalities, school districts, other government agencies in complying with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. What basically the State Environmental Quality Review Act does, is require agencies, or boards, or boards of education, to consider the environmental impacts associated with any of their actions. So actions would include deciding to fund a project, to build a project, to go forward with additions and everything else. And what it really requires is that you consider that as part of your decision-making, and it's kind of a first preliminary step. And it, it really starts off with, first, the board considering what type of action are they dealing with, and, and generally, you bring in your consultants, and there's, there's three types of actions. You have type one actions, which I'll talk about a little bit later, you have type two actions, and then you have unlisted actions. So type two actions have been predetermined by the Department of Environmental Conservation as to not really require an environmental review, but the other actions, type one, which tend to be bigger actions, and unlisted actions require additional steps. And they really require that the board, before you decide to do something, would consider whether there'll be significant adverse environmental impacts. And generally, that issue is not about, you know, small impact, or, or whether something, you know, might be noisy when you're building something, but really whether you're significantly changing the environment. We've worked with SEI and Appel and Osborne, we've prepared the document Mark has mentioned, and our feeling in looking at this is there's certain aspects of the elementary school project that would be properly classified as type one. So what that means is the first step is you have to decide who's going to be the lead agency, because the way the law's set up is that all the agencies, they have to make a decision, first get together and say, well, who's going to take the lead on this? And the idea is that for all these projects, even though there's multiple agencies, there's just one environmental review. So tonight, what you have before you is a resolution. What the resolution would say is that the Board of Education intends to be the lead agency, and you send this out to all the other agencies, and we have a list, I think maybe eight or ten, or something like that, and those agencies will then consent, hopefully, and then at your meeting in May, you can become the lead agency. For some of you who may go back a little bit further, it used to be that the State Education Department did the environmental reviews for all the projects, and at the beginning, about 2000 or so, that changed, I think quite properly with the idea that we should have the environmental review done in the district where the people are, so they can find out about it and hear about it, versus it being done in someone's office in Albany, which is the way it used to be done. So you, you have the resolution, what will happen is, is that, assuming you adopt it, the district staff will send out notices to all these other agencies. Then in May, assuming that they all come back, that they consent, then you can become the lead agency and run the seeker review. The idea that we're, we're proposing is that probably in, in June, and maybe in September, and during the summer, there'll be public information meetings about the project, which will give more explanation to the public about it, but also allow the board to receive more public comment about what's going on, and, you know, kind of people's views of it. Also, the Environmental Assessment Forum notes that there are still some studies to be done. The particular one is, there's, there's, will be some discussion later about the Atlantic Avenue site, and there needs to be a new wetlands delineation. There was actually one many years ago, but you have to update them. We have to wait for the snow to melt before we do that, so that, that's going to be going on, but we'll have all that information by the fall. So ultimately, I think about in October, you'll have the public comments, you'll have all the information before you, and in your meeting in October, you'll be deciding whether the project may have a significant adverse environmental impact. Now, if you say that the project as proposed will not have a significant environmental impact, you issue something called a negative declaration. I always thought it's a funny name, because a negative declaration's like a good thing. I mean, it means, okay, we've already done all our work, there's nothing else to study, we're ready to send it to the voters. If however, after hearing all this, you say, gee, this project may have a significant impact on the environment, then you issue a positive declaration. Positive declaration is actually a bad thing. Well, not always, but, you know, what that means is that you have to go forward and prepare an environmental impact statement, you have to have further public hearings, and then you have to issue a environmental quality review finding statement, and that's a multi-month process. So, you know, we're gathering the information, you, I'm sure we'll be hearing a lot about this during the spring and summer, and even to the fall, and then October kind of becomes a real decision point. Right now, the decision before you is really very preliminary, as Mark indicated, it's yes, we want to be the lead agency, actually, kind of, the State Education Department's already told you, well, you really are the proper lead agency, but there is a process that we have to go through, and then we can be back, the next steps in May. So that's about the, the idea of the process, but I'd be happy to take any questions from anybody.
Board members, this isn't our first go-around with the process like this, I don't know if that's good or bad, Ed, but we, we have some knowledge, which is great, but any, any questions at all? Mark, any, anything on your end?
No, the only thing I would add is, you, this PowerPoint slide talks about the dates that, that Mr. Primo just went through. If at that October 24th, or we've pegged 24th, the October 24th meeting for, if this, if we're able to keep to the timeline and things keep moving along, the board would make the seeker determination at that meeting instead of, and if it were negative, set a vote date for December. Obviously, if it's a positive declaration, then it would not be in December, you'd move instead into your, into that second phase, so that's sort of the, the front-end timeline, and, and we'll need to walk through the process to see how it all goes, but, but the earliest that there could be a vote with a negative declaration would be in December of seventeen.
And Ed, is the only outlier in all this, the property on Atlantic Ave, because of the wetlands, is that kind of the one that might be a more concern?
Yeah, I, I think that may be the case. I mean, there's, there's certainly aspects of the project that are just maintenance and, and code upgrades and minor additions that would typically not be that would typically not be that significant, there are some site works, and Vic can talk about that, the, the action is properly classified as type one, though, so we do have to kind of go through the process, the Atlantic Avenue site, I think is the only site where there isn't any current development on there, rest of the sites have some sort of, they've already been developed and are under use, and it's more upgrading and some expansion of those.
Okay, great, thank you, Barb?
I did, just want to comment, because I didn't get through all of it, but I did, was truly, truly enamored with the geological formations that, the Wisconsin, whatever that was, age, wow, so are we part of Wisconsin then? But no, and then the, then the whole flora and fauna protected and endangered.
Yeah, this, it's, it's really incredible, the information that, that's available to people, and, and the amount of
So I noticed.
detail they, they, they can come up with, and, and it's important to develop all that information, and you have it here.
Okay, board members?
Think, before we go on, the next step of this, though, is, I, we do need to have Vic walk you through the status of the project and some, a little bit of information about how that is going to work as we go forward, so Vic, if you would, you can be in charge of the clicker right there, and if you would just do, do us the favor of walking us through, there's two slides for each of the sites, each of the proposed sites, one of the proposed renovations to the building, and one of the changes to the site, the driveways and so on that we, that we are proposing, so Vic, I would turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mark, I am Vic Thomaselli, Principal with SEI Design Group, thank you again for having us tonight, couple things, Dr. Sansucci had indicated that, you know, where we are in the process, we have to identify what is going to be in the project generally, so that we can go through the steps of seeker, identifying the maximum scope that this project will undertake, so that seeker can proper, properly be evaluated and ultimately determined, what I put up on the screen is, it's just a simple graphic to talk a little bit about where we are in the process and then where we're going, because we are going to show you some drawings, I think it's important to note that where we are on that diagram is left of the first dotted line, so we're in the very earliest stages of planning, again, our purpose is to develop what we think will be a maximum scope of work in a project, start looking at, talking about educational program, physical educational needs, and developing some very conceptual drawings, so that we can do seeker, and we can also help develop a budget for the project that you're ultimately going to vote in the fall, so again, it's just important to note, you know, we're very early in the planning stages, the first dotted line represents the vote, and then after that, the real design work happens, so, we're by no means done, we're by no means even close to, to done, all the design work will happen after the vote, so, as Mark said, we do have site plans and floor plans for each of the buildings, and I'm going to breeze through them very quickly, but at Cobles, we are planning on doing some parking lot, the bus loop will remain, but parking lot and parent drop off will be improved, extending a, a new emergency access road to the back of the building, on that south side of the building, there are two additions planned for classrooms and on the south side of the building, now the plan is flipped around from the previous drawing, but at the top of the page, you'll see, we're doing four classroom additions on the left side of the page, and three classroom additions on the right, with the, with a, an ancillary small gym space included there, we're moving music from what's on the right side of that drawing to closer to the cafeteria, which is the, the reason why we're adding the classrooms on that, on that right wing, move on to Indian Landing, and I'm going to go fast through these, please stop me if anybody has any questions, but Indian Landing, same thing, we're, here we are improving vehicular circulation with the bus traffic, as well as parent drop off, and parking, both in the front of the building and then around the back, a little harder to see up on the screen, but we're doing a two-story four-classroom addition on the front of the building, and then an expansion of the cafeteria space out the back, and then a, perhaps a small addition off to the, the north side of, of Indian Landing, again, in plan, shows a little more clearly, but the stacked four-classroom addition off the front of the building, the expansion of the cafeteria out to the east, and another classroom off to the, to the north, I think we just need to say, we understand the, the historical or architectural significance of Indian Landing, and we know we need to be sensitive to that front elevation as we deal with, with that building, I suspect it's going to be more prominent than perhaps some of the others, but nonetheless, we're going to take a, a real close look at the, the architectural appropriateness of, of whatever we do at Indian Landing, Scribner, which is a series of, of wings and, and previous additions, but if we're, I don't know if this has a pointer on it, but we're, we're adding a four-classroom addition off to the middle of the page, if you will, down at the bottom, you'll see it in plan a little more clearly, but we're doing a classroom addition there, we are similarly expanding the cafeteria in order to accommodate the increased enrollment, we're doing some work also for an increased gym station at Scribner, we're not really doing anything with the, with the bus drop off, that remains the same, but we are expanding parking and again, doing an emergency access road off to the, the east side, again, a little more clearly, in sort of goldenrod color, down in the middle, bottom of the page, is the classroom addition that we're proposing, small addition off the cafeteria, and a small addition for the gym, the gym expansion space, the other components of the project, and again, this is all based on an increased enrollment, but we're, we're going to be talking about the bus garage, but in order to talk about the bus garage, the, the proposal is that we relocate the maintenance facility from the current bus garage site to the site on Atlantic Avenue, what we're really proposing here is minimal construction in order to accommodate the maintenance department and their needs, so it's, we're basically developing a, an undeveloped site right now for that, but just showing it in plan, there's parking for, for the folks who work there, there's a building similar to what, what is on the bus garage site for the B&amp;G Group, and then a small pole barn and a storage building on that site as well, the, the area, and again, it's hard to see, but north is to the left on this page, and to the south, there's a, I think a faint blue line up on the screen that starts to show where the wetlands starts, but again, as Ed said, we are in the process of updating that wetlands delineation and making sure that we've got an accurate depiction of where that starts and stops, we've met with, with Alan and with other folks, and just to help, to help develop a program for that building, and just again, a preliminary floor plan, so that we could size what the building needs to be, so that, working with Gary Hoffman and campus, we can help put budgets together for the construction of the building, the current bus garage site, this is the, again, preliminary conceptual site plan that shows what it might look like with a new bus garage facility, again, hard to see perhaps, but in this diagram, north is up, toward the right of the page, there is a faint outline of where the bus garage exists currently, it's under car parking, over to the right-hand side, bottom of the page, and then proposing a new bus garage on that site, that would include office and driver training spaces and locker rooms, as well as bus maintenance bays and a drive-through wash bay, we're showing bus parking along the north side of the property, along the south, excuse me, southwest side and along through the middle, the existing pole barn on that site remains, and the existing fueling islands remain where they are, and again, just a, again, conceptual floor plan of what the bus garage might include to accommodate the program, and to create something for campus to put some numbers to it.
So, and one of the, one of the purposes of that, obviously, besides being able to, you know, to design a project far enough so that you can develop an accurate budget, you know, it's important tonight for two reasons, we need to understand the scope of that, so that we can make some judgments about the potential environmental impacts, and you need to have plans that are well-developed enough, because if we are able to go forward, potentially we could be voting in mid, in the middle of next year, and that vote would establish the budget for the project, so, and as you can see, there's a year's worth of design after you approve that budget, so you want to make sure that you have an accurate, that you have enough done, so that you can make an informed judgment about how much we're going to need to do this project, so there's lots of water that will go under the bridge, but at that point, once the voters have established the budget, you're managing your project to that budget, and, and so you want to be able to, to be, to assure that you can deliver what you've promised, right, so we've been targeting about a $40 million budget, we are estimating that that budget would use approximately $17 million of cash from capital reserve, and we're planning on the use of about half of our debt service fund, so this would essentially be all the money that we have in, in debts, in capital reserve and debt service would be devoted to this project, a four, total $40 million project, one of the key design features, and I know the board knows this, because we've had conversations about it, but one of the things that we want to make sure happen into the future, and this project's an important component of that, is that we maintain, not grow, but not shrink, that positive local share, you know, if we could reel back the way we've done capital projects to the beginning of time, we might have made, you know, different choices, Penfield's always done projects based on cash, we've had a long history of that, we've done good work with it, and we've maintained our buildings very well with very little impact to the taxpayers, one of the good things about that is state aid, that if you do a project based on cash, on capital reserves, the state aids it as if it were borrowed, so if you do, if you do renovations, for example, they pay you, and, and you spend, say, 10 million on it, they assume that you borrowed that over a 10-year period of time, they pay you back principal and interest, interest that you never borrowed, and principal that you ever made, over the next 15 years, it creates that revenue stream, because we've done our projects based on cash, we are positive, this, this chart is intended to show net impact of, of a project to the, to the budget or to the tax levy, and as you can see, our bars go down, so our, our debt service versus building aid is positive to about, to the tune of about a million and a half dollars, one of the things we want to make sure happens in the design of this project is that that continue, right, our budget is currently supported by about a million and a half dollars of this revenue, and if it goes away, which it would do in the future without a well-designed project, there's no exception to the tax cap for that, so essentially, you would have a million and a half dollar potential hole in your budget, and no exemption to the cap, so, you know, it's, so you would, that would be a very, very challenging place to end up, so in, going forward, and in, and in Penfield's future, you know, the tax cap, which is relatively new in the existence of schools, is going to be the thing that rules everything, this is one thing, if we could roll back our 30-year history, we'd say, well, you should manage your projects closer to zero, you know, obviously, you know, that's, that's choices, no one dreamed of a tax cap 30 years ago, so, we want to be careful as we design going forward, not to grow that any further, right, because you would have, creating a potential greater hole, not to, and to shrink it means that the taxpayers pick up that additional burden, so around $40 million, around $17 million from capital reserve, and around $2 million from debt service fund, we accomplish that goal, and this chart shows positive, based on those variables, Bernie Donigan's office has projected positive, that million and a half cash flow going out to 2029, by then, we need to be thinking about the next project, about the next, what are we going to do, so, and, and I'm sure someone will take care of that, so, but in, but, but the, I guess I, I just wanted tonight to say, our budget's not well, we're not bringing to a fully, a fully crafted proposal around that, because we're still in process, but these are the important considerations that we have in mind, this is why we're doing it and designing the project in the way we are, and this is the key goal that we want to achieve as, as we go through that, so we'll be managing to that, it's one of the reasons that we can't do, you know, everything in one project, we can't do more than about that, 39 or 40 million dollars, we can't, because then we simply don't have enough cash to ensure that the positive cash flow, so, there's lots of work left to be done, we'll need to be managing to the preliminary budget, and then once the budget passes, we'll have to manage to that again, but tonight, you get to take the first step and decide if you want to be lead agency, if there are any questions of me, of Ed, or of Vic, now would be a great time to ask them, I'd also like to say thank you, Steve Staveski is in the audience of SEI Design, he's done lots of this work behind the scenes, and Gary Huffman, whom you also know is here, just to keep me honest, I think, so, are there any questions?
Board members, any questions, Barb?
Um, Cobles is near and dear to my heart, because I actually did help build that building, but I see where the student pickup is, and part of me is very sad, because those trees are all going to go, right?
There are some, there are some trees that will need to be removed, and we are planning on replanting, and, you know, replacing, replacing trees.
Okay, and then one other point, and I, you probably don't have anything to do with it, but I think that Mr. Huffman would, when you would, we get this approved, then you're going to be doing that parent or student pickup, can it be done in the summer versus, because I, that's all kindergarten and second graders looking out that window, and you're going to have lots of fun trucks and all sorts of things, I'm just saying as, you know,
It's a learning opportunity.
Yes.
But we also have to, you know, remember that we have to do due diligence to the state for our requirements for those kids, no, I know, but I just wanted to put it out there, because unless maybe Dr. Kenny's going to move those kids, and then you put fifth graders there and they could care less, but, just saying.
I would tell you, Barb, that, and you know too, is that what I'm always amazed at is the resiliency of our students to, to, to not worry about the things as adults do.
Right.
So I think at the high school, when I first started here, we were in the major capital project, and every adult was concerned, because there were no ceiling tire, tiles, there was wires, there was construction, there was fake hallways put up so the construction workers could move, and, and every adult in the building said, kids aren't going to be able to handle this, and if you asked a student during that time period, I think they'd say, there were construction workers here, there were no ceiling, and the same with even the elementary level, it's, it's exciting and new, but, but, and, and Gary would be able to tell you, anytime we've ever had an anytime we've ever had an issue in terms of mowing or, or construction work, and there's a test going on, they've been wonderful to shut things down so, so students can, can move forward. But I, I think the reality is that we probably can't guarantee it's all gonna happen in the summer and over breaks and on weekends, but I'm always amazed at our students. The other thing I'll just share is, we all know Harris Hill has no walls. It's only adults who worry about that. The kids, you can go there and watch them, and there's, there's ninety kids all sitting near each other, learning all different content, so.
Thank you, and I appreciate that.
This is the post-video game era, so they get bored of trucks very quickly.
Oh, that's true. That's true. Okay. Unless they're painted like Star Wars or something. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, board members? Possibly there's a future Babyar's Elementary School in the works there. Name-wise, we don't know, but.
We should probably go with Larkin versus Babyar's.
Depending on the, depending on the donation. I, I also appreciate, you know, being in the Indian Landing neighborhood, and the consideration of, of a couple of trees there and the fact that it is a, it's a really neighborhood school, you know, that you can walk to and bike to, and, and keeping that, you know, the way it is, in a sense, I think is important to, to those of us in that neighborhood because, you know, it's different. You know, it's just different, you know, because it's built in like nineteen forty-eight or whatever. So, it's just unique, so I think, I think everyone appreciates that. I think the neighborhoods would, will appreciate that as well. So, all right, well, thank you, gentlemen, everyone.
Thank you for having us.
We appreciate it, and we'll see you soon.
We'll be back, I'm sure.
I'll just turn it back over to Mark. We'll go back to the beginning of our packet and, and walk through the budget.
Thank you. Next, we're going to, tonight, on your agenda, you approve the, you will approve the district's budget for submission to the voters at our annual meeting. The, I'm gonna actually turn it back to you.
Great.
We haven't practiced this yet. We will have practiced this quite a lot by the time we're done.
Yeah, we actually start tomorrow at the PTA meetings and going around all of our buildings. So, I get the opportunity to, to do the first couple of slides, which really focus on the positives of, of building a bright future here in Penfield. And so, I will, I will go quick through this, but just as a reminder to our board and to our community, we do some great things here. All four Penfield Elementary Schools ranked in the top eleven out of one hundred and sixty-one schools in the Rochester area. Bay Trail Middle School was re-designated as a school to watch. The High School is once again named one of Newsweek Magazine's List of America's Best High Schools, and the Penfield School District ranked number three out of sixty-seven area school districts. So, we do great things. Our staff and our faculty do incredible things. Again, where we sit now is, based on last year's data, graduation rate at ninety-eight percent, where the state average is seventy-nine. Eighty-seven percent of our graduates continue on to college. Ninety-eight percent earned a Regents diploma, and seventy-two percent earned the higher advanced designation. And our SAT scores, while we don't necessarily prep for SATs because we're working on New York State curriculum, all the work that we do does prepare students, and we exceed, exceed the state averages. We're more than just test scores. We're more than just assessments. Here in Penfield, we focus on the whole student. So, again, as we mentioned earlier, best community for music education. We have an incredibly growing and strong science Olympiad team. The robotics team has, wins tons of awards. Athletics, we do an incredible job, and this is just a few bullets because I don't want to spend hours telling you how awesome Penfield is. But we do incredible things here. And then, thanks to your leadership as a board, having our district goals focused not just on academic achievement and excellence, but partnerships, fiscal responsibility, which Mark is, is, obviously, everything with his budget you can take a look at is, is focused on fiscal responsibility, making smart choices to support the whole student. And I'll turn it back over to Mark.
Thank you. So, you know, we're at the end of this process, the, a process that we began in October. And, you know, I mentioned that we haven't practiced this, because we haven't. But, but we, but we will be presenting it over the course of the next several weeks to PTAs, to the faculty and faculty meetings, to the Rotary. So, you know, that's, this is an important part of our communication, and we just wanted you to be able to see. I mean, I, I certainly understand that you know the awards, the accolades that we receive, but it's, I think, important to remind folks as we go out what their budget supports. The, we began the process in October with the establishment of a budget calendar. We looked backwards a little bit at the audit report, talked about how we did, and thought about some goal, and the board established and thought about some goals, some assumptions, and gave us some guidelines for budget development. Then, beginning in January, we moved through the budget in a variety of, of components, the capital budget, a program, administrative budgets. The board had a work session whereby we reviewed some key changes in, in, in the budget areas. BOCs, we, in the March meeting, at the last March meeting, we reviewed a proposed total budget where we didn't know where we were at with regard to revenue, and we anticipated that, I anticipated, I think I told you that I expected that there would be a budget, a state budget as of April first. And lo and behold, I was wrong once again, and there was not. So, the budget did pass, though. The New York State did adopt finally a state budget late for the first time in, in several years on April ninth. So, here we are as of April eleventh. We had to scramble, and I appreciate your patience over the weekend as we revised where we were at a couple of times to ensure that we could offer a responsible budget. So, tonight, we haven't changed the dollar amount of the total amount of the budget. It remains as was presented at the, at the March twenty-eighth meeting. But we have made some changes, certainly on the revenue side, and we've also moved some money around to correctly align it on the expense side of the budget. So, with the approval tonight, we move forward with our advertising, legal notices, and so on. One of the things you need to do tonight is to adopt the property tax report card that talks about what our budget-to-budget increase is, what our proposed tax levy is, and so forth. That'll be submitted to the state tomorrow. And then, that all aims towards the public hearing on May second, which is the last final formal presentation of the budget, and we vote, as you know, on the sixteenth. So, this is what our, we've, we've been backwards looking before now, and now we turn our, our gaze forward. This is what this year's pie looks like in total. And you can see the various components with our budget split up in the way that we look at it as we go throughout the course of the year. Year over year, looks, it looks like this. So, this is not a year of great change. You can see that the blue bar is sixteen seventeen, budget by component again, and the red bar, the seventeen eighteen school year. You can see this is not a year when, when we're making dramatic changes of, of any, in any of those program areas. This is the detail of that budget. You can see that we are proposing a budget of ninety-five million five hundred three forty-seven. That's a two-point-three percent, or about two-point-two million dollar increase. You can see the various components of the, of the budget compared there as well. With that established, and we reviewed that in more detail at the last meeting, the, with that, you turn your eye towards the revenue side of the budget. And, and I mentioned this with regard to capital projects. You know, I said for many years that the only thing that mattered in all of this decision-making was impact on fund balance. And now, it really is everything, you know, the only thing that really matters is impact on your tax cap because that's not moving, and, and a budget override's enormously difficult. So, you know, in the five years, six years now of the tax cap, we've had only two years where the relative, the relevant factor was two percent for two percent of the tax cap. It's been below that for every year, and it remains below that for us this year for all school districts, one-point-two-six percent based on the rate of inflation for twenty seventeen. Tax-based growth factor for us, which is the growth of bricks and mortar in the community, also relatively low. So, one-point-two-six percent rate of inflation allows the levy to grow by one-point-two-six. We don't get a lot of bump from a four-tenths of one percent tax-based growth factor. So, when you work that through the formula, along with the changes in pilots, it, it ends up for Penfield for this go-forward year that we're at a two-point-one-five tax levy limit. You have in front of you tonight and some more details, and I'll get to that in a future slide. But for Penfield, the majority, the reason that's so important is the majority of our budget comes from the taxpayers. So, sixty-five percent of our budget in this proposed budget is supported by, is supported by the tax levy, about twenty-seven percent in state aid, and all the other things that we talk about, which includes appropriated fund balance, draws from reserves, lost book fees, and everything else that you would cook into a budget only really covers eight percent. So, it makes state aid for us important, but really, the tax cap has to be the overwhelming source of, of concern. Year to year, year over year, this is again what that looks like. So, you can see here that real property tax at about, at just over sixty million dollars, sixty-one million dollars is, is the majority of that revenue. And here, you can see the details of that. So, I'd like to spend a little bit of time on this. We're proposing a budget that contains an estimated tax levy of sixty-one million six. It's estimated because the board doesn't finally establish that levy until August when you, when we have, you know, final details on assessment rolls and so on. But this is the budget and the levy amount that you're discussing with the public. So, that's a, that's the levy, that sixty-one million or sixty-one million six is the revenue of last resort. You get there after you look at all of your other sources. So, state aid, twenty-five million nine hundred thousand dollars. That's about a two-point-six percent, or about a six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar increase. We received, in terms of foundation aid, from the governor's additional, initial budget until the final budget, about an additional hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars. So, that turns into a, a foundation aid increase. Foundation aid being our single largest category of about two-point-seven percent. Two-point-seven percent is the statutory minimum for this year. So, you'll remember, we did in, in mid-year, sort of the, how foundation aid is supposed to work and how it doesn't work discussion. One of the things that they do in, in every year in recent memory is, you know, at the end of it, here's how much you should get, here's how much you're gonna get, and they make those adjustments. One of the adjustments this year is that nobody would get in foundation aid less than two-point-seven. There were districts that will get more. Penfield's not one of them. We, we got the statutory minimum. And that's prob, that shouldn't be a surprise, I don't think. You know, certainly, they're not interested in targeting districts like Penfield in, with limited resources. So, the other items contained in the, in the proposed revenue budget, a sales tax increase of about three percent. Pilots go down because we have pilot projects that are aging off of our, aging off of the roles. So, they get a, typically, a ten-year pilot payment schedule, and at the end of that, they go on to the roles, and, and the payment ceases. That's going on. So, and, and the new pilots that are coming on are mostly exempt, so they don't generate lots of additional pilot payment in their early years. Other, other revenue, slight increase. Fund balance remains flat, and we're drawing more from reserve than we have in past years. So, in total, in the base year, we had draws from tax surtiory reserve, from the ERS reserve, and from workers' comp. We've slightly reduced the, the tax surtiory reserve. We're, we're square there now. In fact, we're not fully funded based on the outstanding claims. So, we'll, we would propose stopping the reduction there, and that's consistent with what we talked about in our reserve planning. ERS reserve, we're slowing down the draws from that, and we're using the excess funding in the workers' comp reserve so that you can see that the net of those three represents an increase in draw from reserve for this, for this budget. You, you work your way through all of that, and you end up with that sixty-one million seven hundred thousand dollar tax levy, about one-point-one or million, or just under two percent, one-point-nine percent budget-to-budget. That's the levy. The levy's the amount we collect in total in, it's a dollar amount. It's not how we collect it. How we collect it is based on the tax rate. So, the levy doesn't change from, from the moment the, the board adopts it. But what can, what can change is, and what will change, is the, the tax rates because these are based on estimates of assessed valuation. The equalization rates are established, but not final yet. And, and so, these, these numbers will change. But certainly, what's dramatic here and what needs some further conversation, you can see the rates in Penfield. Parenton, Pittsford, Masset, and Walworth are about three-tenths of one percent, about an eight cent, or almost no change really in rate based on that one point, just under two percent increase in the levy, the amount we're collecting. But what is changing is the equalization rate in Brighton. The equalization rate in Brighton will fall for this role from ninety-four to eighty-nine percent. That, a falling equalization rate drives up the tax rate in that particular town. And I, I think we need to explain why this is confusing to boards, to the public. It's beyond our control. Honestly, remember, our levy is one-point-nine percent. We're collecting two percent more. If everything else remained the same, what you would expect to see happen, and what sometimes happens, is that assessments grow a little bit across the community, and you spread your, you spread your two percent of increased levy across a slightly larger tax base, and you'd expect the tax rate to grow, you know, something less than that one-point-nine, maybe, you know, one-point-seven or one-point-five. That doesn't happen when equalization rates change. And I'd like to spend a little bit of time explaining why. So, we're dropping from ninety-four to eighty-nine percent. And I just mentioned that declining equalization result, rates result in a higher tax rate for that particular town. That's because the property tax is based on assessed valuation, on the assessed value of real property determines the rate. But assessments are intended to represent the market value or the actual value of property at arm's length. So, the state of New York determines an equalization rate if they perceive, based on their, the data that they receive on home sales, that there's a difference between the general level of assessments and the, what those houses are selling for. And so, that equalization rate means that there's that gap in their, based on their data in the town of Brighton, that houses are assessed generally in the community at about eighty-nine percent of what their market value would be, that it's a hot market essentially. And so, they adjust the, so the system, the math of this adjusts the, the rate to ensure that everyone with the same market value home, not assessed value, but market value home pays the same proportion of, of taxes. And that's how, this is a quick example of how that works. So, market value, this is not the assessed value, but what the a hundred thousand dollar home would sell for in each of the four towns in Monroe County at an arm's length. This is, this is what your house is worth. In a hundred percent equalization rate town, it's assessed at a hundred thousand dollars. In, in a fractional assessment, or where there's an, an equalization rate below one, that the state's determined that a ninety-four thousand dollar house there generally is worth a hundred four, a hundred thousand dollars. So, the math adjusts the tax rate so that in each of those towns, no matter what the assessed value is, that the market value, because the market value's the same, you can see the tax bill is the same. And when, and what happens when the market value falls farther, this is, these are the seventeen eighteen rates now. You can see it works out the same. Everyone pays the same based on the market value. But the challenge, the challenge for schools, the challenge for us is, is, you know, what this hides is that driving of the rate. The change in rates, very real for our community members. They feel that. Unfortunately, the, the moving parts of this are beyond our control. So, the, the assessments are controlled by the towns, and the equalization rates are established by the state of New York. I understand that, I do know that Brighton intends to go through a town-wide reassessment. They will be reassessing, and so, for next year's roles, the eighteen roles, they'll pop back up to a hundred. And what will happen in that year's math is their tax rate will drop. It'll be negative. And you, and the state would argue that everyone's paying their fair share. It's the changes that are difficult. And, and I think I just wanted, wanted to spend some time to make you aware of that. It's, again, it's, it's unfortunate. It's again, um, it's, it's um, it's unfortunate, uh, but it is beyond our control. Um, this is our, um, we'll include this analysis in our um, in our um, newsletter when we send it out. So this shows the equalization rates, um, the changes per town, the percentage increase. Um, and it shows for an, uh, someone with basic star, a basic star exemption and a senior enhanced star exemption, what your um, what your estimated tax rate increase will be. I hope to update this by the time the newsletter goes out. Um, because the state's part of this depends on the overall level of the value of those enhanced star exemptions. Um, and the state was not releasing those pending um, the resolution of the state budget. So I don't have corrected ones as of tonight. Uh, these are based on last year's values. It'll change it slightly. It shouldn't change it a lot, but we want it to be right when it goes out. So hopefully we'll, we'll have some time to adjust that uh, uh, right before it goes out. But here you can see the, the difference in those bills uh, for an emp- uh, for a um, this is based on a two hundred thousand dollar home, which is more typical than my hundred thousand dollar example in Penfield. Um, with a basic star exemption, your bill based on that eight cents changes by about twelve dollars. The total increase in the bill for a two hundred thousand dollar home in Brighton would be about uh, three hundred and thirty dollars. Three hundred, can't say it on my glasses. Yes, sorry, three hundred and twenty dollars. Um, with that though, the levy again, the amount we collect, we now, we've extended our chart one more year. We don't know the rate for Penfield. I put TBD uh, there because we won't adopt final rates until August. Uh, but we do know what the levy would be of about one point nine percent. Um, um, that extends our one point eight average uh, one more year. So um, adding one point nine and dividing by ten years rather than nine, we're still at a one point eight uh, percent ten-year average in levy increases. So a decade, uh, we've been a two percent district, I guess I would argue, for a decade now. Um, so um, you know, I think our, our taxpayers have appreciated that. Um, the other things, the, the uh, the other items we wanna point out tonight are just what the voters will confront when they get to the polls. So they'll, uh, there'll be three, three items that we will be asking for their um, decision on. One is of course the election of board members, to elect two members to the Board of Education for three-year terms. Um, a general fund budget, um, seeking approval of the budget at a cost of ninety thousand five hundred dollars. Um, a bus purchase, we always have a bus purchase uh, proposition to keep our fleet up to um, to keep our fleet current and we're asking this year for approval of four sixty-six passenger buses and four twenty-eight passenger buses with a total cost of uh, seven hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, withdrawals from both the general fund and uh, the reserve fund. And we're asking that the board, that the board, I'm sorry, that the public approve um, creation of a new uh, capital reserve fund with a, so that we can begin uh, a s- another cycle of that um, with an ultimate amount of six million dollars uh, with the seed money from, for that to come from uh, the existing school bus reserve fund. Um, all this will be explained in the three-part format at the budget hearing on May second. Um, and we encourage everyone to come out to vote on May sixteenth at the high school between the hours of uh, six and nine P M. Are there any questions?
Board members, any questions? You did a great job of explaining the Brighton scenario for those of us that live in Brighton. Because it's um, I talked to the supervisor on occasion, he'll tell you. And um, it's, you know, those of us in East Brighton, as we call it, our average home prices are much lower than Maine Brighton, as you recall it. So um, as much as I know we're concerned about the impact, um, on the other side of it, the impact is even more dramatic. If you live in Brighton, then you have Brighton's school taxes, in my opinion, from what I've heard. So the downside is I think, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, with that assessment going up, of course, the town taxes.
Yeah, the, you know, the.
Are impacted.
To the, um, it's the town, well, what the assessments, that town, you know, reassessments, the town taxes get, you know, the reassessment sort of impacts everybody. Um, the equalization rate, the towns are not necessarily, i- the equalization rate turns into our problem, right? Because the town levies their tax in the town. So they don't, they don't have to allocate between various assessing jurisdictions. So you know, there's really, all the, all the reassessment does for them is, well, it does, it keeps it fair, right? So if you argue that reassessments create fairness, I, yeah, I understand that that folks can disagree about that. But, but it, the reassessment keeps the, keeps the relative values of the properties correct in the town. Um, but the equalization rate issues don't really impact them. It's a school issue as we, because we overlap those, those boundaries. Um, the town boundaries. So the reassessment, um, you know, is a cost for the town. And so sometimes they're reluctant to do it as frequently as the, as they might. They have to manage their own budgets as well. Uh, but certainly it's challenging for us.
And, and it's a political thing too.
Absolutely.
Guess in every town, but I think the, the message we can send um, to our residents that live in Brighton is, you know, contact the Brighton board and town board. Because this is not, I mean, we are between the rock and the hard place here and uh, you know, and also Brighton touches Wheatland, Childley, Rush Henrietta School District.
And, and I think um, Brighton Schools has a piece of Pittsburgh, so.
Yes, that's right.
So they'll pick up, they'll have the same sorts of things going on. And I'm not, I'm honestly not familiar with, you know, part of, part of what happens here is, you know, we've got Penfield, the town of Penfield, our share of Penfield with some billion dollars of assessed valuation. And so, you know, these kinds of changes with Brighton, which is our second largest town, it sort of magnifies it. Um, and the same thing will happen um, in Brighton depending on the size of their chunks of Pittsburgh, so.
Well, it's great explanation. Thank you and uh, you know, I'll forward any comments to you and we'll pass them on to the town board too because, you know, we want things to be fair. But nonetheless, we have to do what we have to do and we have twenty percent of our students come from Brighton, so it is a big concern to us.
There is a process of continuous reassessment where the, the, the towns assess enough properties every year that it stays at a hundred. And then you don't run into this problem. So um, you know, there are solutions.
Well, we can any, you know, the apartment complex on Old Penfield Road.
Yes.
There's, how much extra tax revenue do you think that'll generate? Is there any numbers?
I haven't seen any information.
But that would be in the next year probably, correct? Aren't they, they should be complete?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know what there's, I, um, I mean, I, all I know about that is what I see is a resident driving by. They're doing site work right now and I, I haven't seen any actual construction of buildings. So I don't know what their timeframe is with regard to construction.
It's a, it's huge though, I, yeah.
It is gonna be big.
Every day, so, um, okay. Um, and I did wanna comment too, back on the uh, SECR, the thumb drive that you provided us was excellent in providing detail. I, I think great board members and um, Mark and I were talking earlier, you know, when I was looking at the map, property map of eighteen seventy-two, uh, I don't know if this would have been better for you or worse, but there were probably only fifty property owners in the whole town.
That's, it's, it would be the same.
Yeah, okay. Or for us, um.
Enrollment would be down.
Enrollment might be down, yeah. But I think that was fascinating when you look at, look at those plots of land and uh, Barb, I'm sure looked at a lot closer, looking for ancestors or whatever.
Just looking to see if I left anything there, you know.
All right. Okay. Is that it for your report?
That, believe it or not, is it.
Okay.
Yes.
So we have a little bit of uh, reading and action to take place. We're on page three of our agenda. Uh, under our facilities report and the SECR intent to declare lead agency status. And as we've heard, the district is currently investigating the feasibility of a project for classroom additions and renovations at Scribner, Cobble's and Indian Landing, construction of a new bus garage on the current site on Five Mile Line Road, and construction of a buildings and grounds facility on the district's Atlantic Ave property. Preliminary information on the scope of the project and potential impacts have been developed in anticipation of a public meeting in June and the board has received this information. The resolution is a preliminary step in the process and authorizes the district administration to notify other government agencies regarding the possibility of a project and determine if they would want to be the lead agency in any future state environmental quality review actions, SECR. So we have a resolution of the Penfield Board of Education dated today in regard to the Penfield Central School District two thousand eighteen elementary schools addition project. Where is the Penfield Central School District? Is in the process of reviewing a proposed two thousand eighteen elementary schools additions project, including upgrades, replacements, rehabilitation and/or reconstruction of various district facilities, including additions and site improvements at Cobble's Elementary School, Scribner Elementary School and Indian Landing Elementary School, site improvements in a new bus garage, transportation building and the existing Five Mile road site and construction of a new building and grounds facility and related improvements on Atlantic Avenue, also known as the project. The New York State Education Department provides that local school districts are to conduct an environmental review for such capital projects pursuant to the requirements of the law and the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR regulations. Pursuant to that, the District Board of Education wishes to act as the lead agency for the SECR review of the project. Now therefore, be it resolved that the project is preliminary classified as a type one action. The District Board of Education directs the district staff to prepare the necessary letters and other notices to all the other potentially involved and interested agencies indicating our intent of the District Board of Education to act as the lead agency for the project. The district staff is directed to send such requests to all other potentially involved and interested agencies, including a copy of this resolution and part one of the environmental agreement form for the project and request that they respond to such requests no later than May thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. The district staff shall also send this information to identified interested parties. The District Board of Education will consider the issue of whether we'll act as lead agency and will also review the potential environmental impacts of the project at their meeting scheduled for May twenty-third, two thousand seventeen. If I could have a motion a second that the above resolution be approved. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. We don't need an individual roll call on that, do we? No, okay. Just checking. Okay, very good. Um, as we've heard, we have financial items as far as approving and adopting the budget. Uh, and the board must adopt the budget for presentation to the voters on May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. If I could have a motion and a s- second that the budget for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year be submitted for the, to the voters for approval on May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen in the amount of ninety-five million, five hundred thousand, three hundred forty-seven dollars.
So moved.
Uh, any conversation, comment? We've seen it and heard it since October. All those in favor? Thank you. The two thousand seventeen, eighteen property tax report card. Each year prior to the state budget vote, all districts are required to submit a property tax report card to the New York State Department of Education and includes information on the proposed school budget and projected tax levy as well as restricted, unrestricted and appropriated fund balances. The required report, which we've seen a couple of times tonight as well, showing information for two thousand sixteen, seventeen and two thousand seventeen, eighteen is attached to your packet. The property tax report card is due by the next business day after board approval, but no later than April twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. Be it resolved that the Penfield Central School District Board of Education approved the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen property tax report card is presented. Be it further resolved that the deputy superintendent for business and finance is directed to submit the property tax report card to the State Education Department by the end of the next business day following this approval. If I could have a motion and a second to do so. Any ca- questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Okay, we're on donations now. We have donations totaling thirty-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars for items in the two thousand sixteen capital project that were received as follows. Harris Hill Elementary P T A Playground Equipment, donation of twenty-five thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars. Indian Landing Elementary P T O Playground Equipment, ten thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars. If I could have a motion a second that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling thirty-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars to the two thousand sixteen capital project budget as shown above. The amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure items and express our gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Penfield Schools.
So, second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? And we always send a letter, as we know, to those groups uh, showing our sincere appreciation. Impartial hearing officer appointment. On April third, two thousand seventeen, board member, Mrs. Barbara Babyars approved Mr. Aaron Turetsky Esquire as an impartial hearing officer in reference to student number zero, 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 six, seven, one, three. Mr. Turetsky is certified, the commissioner of education, to conduct hearings regarding students with disabilities pursuant to section four, four oh four of the education law. The following motion is to confirm this appointment. If I could have a motion a second to appoint Mr. Aaron Turetsky Esquire as impartial hearing officer in reference to student number zero, 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 six, seven, one, three. Okay. Comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Chairman of the election, as we've heard, we have a very important election coming up. Board approval of the chairperson of election for the May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen vote is required. The chairperson, chairman of the election is an eligible voter of the Penfield Central School District. If I could have a motion a second that the Board of Education approve Megan Doherty to serve as the election of Board of Education candidates and vote on the budget on May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen as chairperson of election. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Chief Inspector of Election. Board approval of the chief inspector of election for the May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen vote is required. The chief inspector of election is an eligible voter of the Penfield Central School District. If I could have a motion a second that the Board of Education approve Mary K. Rogers to serve as the election of Board of Education candidates and vote on the budget on May sixteen, two thousand seventeen as chief inspector of elections.
So moved.
All those in favor? We also have inspectors and assistant clerks of elections, quite a process as we all know. Um, board approval of election inspectors and assistant clerks for the May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen vote is required. All inspectors and assistant clerks are eligible voters of the Penfield Central School District. We have a list in our packet of fifty-six individuals that have all been uh, thoroughly uh, vetted to be able to serve in that role and they're all not there at once. If you haven't been there, it's uh, Sharon will crack the whip and keep everybody under control with donuts. But um, if I could have a motion a second that the board approve the above election inspectors as included in your packet and recorded in our minutes and assistant clerks for the May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen budget vote and election. All those in favor? Okay. Got that out of the way, right? Okay, president's comments or remarks. Um, I had a couple of notes and it's on my phone here, but the governor was in town today. Uh, he'll be in many towns because he's taking turns signing the budget bill, which we all know, as Mark mentioned, was approved. Um, and it wasn't an easy process from what I've heard and we've gotten some updates. But um, some of the good things that happened for us, um, you know, the following items were not included in the budget and that's what we, we really worked for. The education tax credit, also known as the Education Affordability Act, was not included. So we've really uh, worked hard for that not to be included. Statewide building aid for charter schools, another one of our uh, things that I know our legislative group has worked on. Um, not so important to us, uh, extension of New York City mayoral control. Um, they did not do anything as far as adjustments of the tax cap, which was also a disappointment and will continue obviously to work on that and through our advocacy committee make people much more aware of that. So um, it had a good and a bad. It had the tuition assistance. Um, you know, and there's a couple of stories out there, you know, how are they gonna follow that up? And what's gonna happen in private schools and things of that nature? So the devil is in the details with all of this, but um, as Mark noted, we, we received additional aid and, and that we are appreciative for. One other item I just wanted to mention, and this one probably jumps out a little bit more, that the United. that the United States Department of Education is spending a million dollars a month for federal marshals to protect Education Secretary Betsy DeVos. So, that's real. Yes, this is new. And so, you know, maybe we should publicly ask that she at least refund some of that, being. A multi-billionaire, exactly. So, I think this is what, in essence, is wrong sometimes with a lot that goes on in Albany, Washington, that, and it's maybe a sign of the times, but to have a million dollars a month for a Education Secretary to travel around the country with federal marshals just seems a little bit out of line. So, I like to bring these things to our attention, because these are things that, you know, the public isn't aware of. And, you know, we have constant issues, and we're gonna have more constant issues with this Department of Education. And, you know, that twelve million dollars could certainly be well-used in a lot of other places. Maybe not Penfield, but the city of Rochester, you know, a million other places. So, anyways, I wanted to bring that up because it's not right. Okay, so, any comments on that? You got a lot of lots, yeah, I know. We could go on for a long time. But in the essence of time, we have unfinished business. You have your Board of Education schedule of meetings that's in your packet, and we will have special meetings will be scheduled as required. And as we know, our meetings are generally Tuesdays at seven P.M. in the library here at Penfield High School. So, if I could have a motion a second, that the Board of Education meeting schedule be approved as listed above.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. The other thing I wanted to comment on is, we also, I didn't want to gloss over this, but Meet the Candidates Night, which is a very important night, will be held Monday, April twenty-fourth, at seven P.M. at the Cobble's Elementary School. And I know we have Sherry Johnson coming out for the Monroe County School Board Association. We have some students involved, and I think it'll, it'll be a great event, and we hope to get members of the public out there as well, so. And we have that posted on the website, et cetera. But May twenty-fourth, seven P.M. at Cobble's. April twenty-fourth, sorry. And we rotate that from each school every year, so it's. Hopefully, the candidates will show up on the right night, April twenty-fourth, again. Okay, is there any new business to come before this group? There being none, I've looked for a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-nine P.M.
So moved.
All those in favor? Adjourned.